Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Joint AdHoc Committee of the Downers Grove Village Council and the Downers Grove Library Board of Trustees. Appreciate you all being here and those listening in from afar. First item is to call this meeting order, which I just did. So the next item is a roll call, please. Rosa, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm delighted. We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Tully?
Here.
Commissioner Sadowski-Keugan?
Here.
Trustee Kumtia?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Awesome, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, and hopefully everyone in the audience has a copy of the agenda. All right, I see lots of them out here. Awesome, we don't lose one over on the shelf there. Next item on the agenda is item three, approval of the minutes from our April third, 2025 meeting. Are there any changes or corrections? You're none? Who would like to lob in a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the April third minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed. Those minutes are approved as submitted, so lighten fast. If you walk in late, you'll miss the meeting. We are on item four, review and discussion of information requested at the April third, 2025 meeting. Thank you once again. I'm sure everyone will join me in my appreciation for compiling all the information that we asked for last time. Once again, the delivery of over 100 pages of riveting content was very helpful. I personally have to say I really, really enjoyed all the meeting minutes from the 1962 village council. I may go back and reread some of that stuff. That was kind of fun.
Phil, Tully, were you mayor at that time?
Yes. I was too. Well, kidding aside, actually some of the historical names that were mentioned in some of those minutes, that was actually pretty cool. So a lot of information, a lot of materials. I know part of the materials were our minutes and part of the materials were the agenda. And part of the materials were what we'll get to in item six. I'm sorry, item five, which is a review and discussion of engagements of experts. But let me pause there and just open it up for the rest of the committee to ask any questions about the information or anything that you saw that you want to supplement, so on and so forth. I'm throwing everything today to Bart Hali.
Oh, no, I have only comments on when we talk about discussion of engagement of experts. But yeah, thank you. That was really, really helpful, I think. And as Martin mentioned, it's interesting to see what changes and what doesn't change in those minutes. Same, it's like the same people are there, just in different bodies. Interesting. Yeah, that was, there were some, a couple of questions that I think I had asked about if we become a district library, the changes that would incur. And that was interesting to see because the area would expand, but those people would self devote in order to join our library, right? That was interesting for me to, that was a question I had had to see like if we could serve a larger population, but we not necessarily could serve, but if they could self devote in. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah. You know, one of my biggest questions was about the commission form of government. It seems like we're kind of still figuring that out. So based on reading the key features of both sets of government, it seems like the only thing that we retained, or at least that we did not change fully over to with the managerial form of government, hopefully I got this correct, is that we did not change to the aldermen and wards, correct? And then we did not give the mayor veto power, but rather we chose to continue to give the mayor voting power. So those were kind of the areas where we didn't quite change over in the same way that most of our surrounding municipalities changed fully over to the council manager form of government. Is that correct? Did I read that mostly correctly?
I would concur with those two finds, for sure.
Okay. So do we think that that's kind of what is keeping us then from being able to have an elected board similar to some of our other surrounding municipalities? And I assume this is something that we've spoken with state, the state attorneys and things like that. That's the reason why we can't do it? Because of some of those kind of legacy things that we held on to?
Do not know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, and I'm sure Nathan has a comment on this too. One of the things I think we should decide whether we're going to discuss it is what the legal implications are, whatever we dug up. Because I have a gazillion questions. And I think some of it is probably, in all due respect to our extraordinary staff at both the village and the library, some of these may be legal questions. And I just wanted to see the legislative history. There's none. It seems like things were done by ordinance sort of selectively. But what that means today, my guess is that's probably something needs deeper dive. And I don't know if that's necessarily within our parameters. But it's a very good question. I just don't know if it's within our scope.
Yeah, I feel it does. That would be the reason why we can't. You know what I mean? But that would be part of the, part of why we can't do, do whatever we can.
Well, I don't even know if it's can't.
Well, that's what I think.
Questions can or can't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, right. And that does kind of play into what we're investigating.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I think it's a question that deserves an answer. But what I was going to suggest, and then I'll stop talking, is that before we go too far into that, or ask anybody to go too far into that, then maybe take it back to the village council to see if they want us to do that.
Sure.
That's my only thought.
That's fair.
That seems like a fair approach. The second thought is, given the information we have received today, do we have a set of potential path forward? In other words, I read that no jurisdiction in the whole United States has a hybrid approach. Is the hybrid approach still on the table as something we want to explore the pros and cons for? Since it's a concept rather than something that we've seen practically implemented. Obviously, we also know that our rural model, and that requires special legislation. Is that an option that we are going to discuss the pros and cons of? If we eliminate those two, then it seems like there's the current status quo and there's becoming a district library. And that, I'm not sure if, do we need to understand how the village is structured? What parts of a commission form we retain to answer the question as to whether there are pros and cons to a district library?
So that's why I was asking if we're, if we're just going to focus on only district library or if we do want to know if there's another path for it or not.
Sure. So you're saying that it may become a binary choice if we determine there's no other legal avenue to that middle, that middle version.
Yeah, and I do know that the village council previously had stated that they weren't that interested in continuing with the district libraries. That was kind of why I was wondering.
Yeah, I got mixed messages on that. I thought that was true at one point. And then it was explicitly said that that was within the purview of this committee to explore the practicality of that. And part of that would be, we see like a map of unincorporated places.
Sure.
And.
And those could be incorporated.
What are the financial implications of becoming a district library and having those people vote and then decide to, you know, pay, I guess, a tax levy towards the tax levy? So, you know, that's sort of a one clear path forward. And then we have the current status quo, that's another clear path. And then there's a bunch of mud.
Right. Yeah, it does appear that most of the folks that decided that we had, at least in the questions that had been answered for us, that had changed over to a district library, most were because they wanted to expand their reach.
Right.
So yes, that would make sense.
Which doesn't seem to necessarily like to us where people that are in the unincorporated part of Downers Grove can become some version of library members and sort of just pay a annual due.
Right, yeah.
Before I say anything further on that topic, were there other questions that you have about additional information?
No, really, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
And before we, of course, and before we further into the scope issue, were there other informational pieces that you were looking for? Nathan?
No, no. Thank you to the staff for compiling this.
It's great.
So just a few things. First of all, one question occurred to me, which is more factual, not legal, is are there any other council manager forms of government that we have that are ready? And I just go back and pick it up. There are other council manager forms of government in Illinois that have an elected library board? That's just a factual question. I'm drawing back to section three of the resolution that creates this ad hoc board. Section three lays out our powers and duties. And there's review and research alternative methods for selection of library board trustees. See and consider appropriate expert information. That's all fine. Three is submit to the village council and the library board trustees in the later September 30, 2025, a report summarizing the attributes of, one, an elected library board selection process, two, an appointed library board selection process, and three, any alternative selection process. And the rest is basically administrative. To me, there's two pieces of this. One is the, assume you can make that choice. What are the pros and cons? And I think that's what we've been gathering information about. And we're probably going to talk in a minute about informed people who can speak to us on that topic. The other piece is, well, whether it's possible. And I know there's different venues that discuss the one with respect to council manager form of government, whether this can be done by ordinance. I don't know. Maybe you're right, maybe you can't, maybe you can. But I don't know, the how question is in here. So do we continue to proceed assuming that it can be done? Or do we necessarily have to address whether it's possible before we talk about the pros and cons? So how is in three? It's the, assume you can, what are the pros and cons? Because that's why I would say if we are determined to talk about the how, then I think we may need to discuss having a real opinion on whether it can be done in a method that hasn't been discussed in great detail, which is by ordinance. And I don't know the answer to that. And I'm not going to ask who to get us the answer to that. I think we need more direction. I'm going to be comfortable doing that or exploring that without further direction from the village council. Once they're seated. But I think that's a, that's a certainly a question that came to my mind, and obviously did to you too. Okay, well then, back on the pros and cons, because we do have a lot of information from this time to last time, which speaks to why appointed library board trustees are a good idea and why elected library board trustees are a good idea. Is there any other information before we start talking about potential engagement of experts? Is there any other information that the committee would like to request now? Not that you can't request it tomorrow, but they want to request now in advance of our next meeting? I mean, the one question I asked is if there's any council manager form of government with an elected library board? Actually, I should expand that. I should really ask, council manager form of government, both, elected and appointed, please?
Yeah, I guess what I would ask is if there isn't, then why, why isn't there council manager forms of governments with elected, with appointed, rather?
Tried to tap my memory back from 1962, but I couldn't. Just as a side comment, part of it is Downers Grove always does things a little bit differently. Okay, I'm not hearing any other requests for information. But obviously, if we think of something, I don't think our respective staff is going to be too upset if we email it in there. Okay, should we move to item five, review and discussion of experts? Because we've got some great stuff to talk about. Just to introduce it, and thank you very much for running me down all this information as well. But I think it's on page 116 of the materials for today's packet. Nice part about it is this is all on one page. Some of the, not some, I think all, everyone that we contacted or talked about contacting last time has responded. And we have two individuals that are interested in participating with no request for compensation, which makes all of us very happy. One person who is interested, but has a flat retainer of $5,000. One person who would love to do it, but it's not available, but then referred us to three other people.
Just want to order a question there. If you were working in the room, if you're working from a handout, unfortunately, that is the incorrect last page of that handout. It is the previous unupdated version. So just for those who may not be aware, the professor Barry did get back to us. And he indicated he's not available. He would like to, but he's not available at this time. And he recommended a professor from Loyola University and an adjunct professor from UIC.
Thank you, Dave. I did not realize that I did not have the updated information. Let me throw an idea out there, since we have the two individuals that we've already identified as being potentially very valuable resources. One's available on the 29th, and one's available, I'm sorry. One is available on May 29th, the other one is available on June 5th.
They're both available on June 5th.
Right. But. Thank you. I was about to say, I was about to suggest something. That rather than putting them both in the same meeting, we consider maybe have one on the 29th and one on June 5th. That seems to work very well. I don't know if we want to put two people at the same time that may be focused. What are your thoughts?
I mean, my thoughts are, going back to what we said at the first meeting, low hanging fruit. This is like free, low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
It's even better that we, you know, I'm ready to like do something. Like you've given us all this information. We have all this information, and I feel like we could put together something preliminary or what of what we already have. And then we can get these people in, or experts. We can ask them the questions that we all know what we're missing, sort of, and we'll be prepared to ask them the questions. So I kind of like, you know, I know for, for the professors with the $5,000 and we have to go back to council, and we have to do, there's a lot more involved. So I, I think it's amazing if we can go ahead and get someone in here on the 29th and then get someone on the 5th, then we can really, I think we'll all feel better too, like you actually ask the questions that we were to ask, is more than we're looking for. I feel like we will.
I completely agree.
That sounds sweet.
Okay, I agree completely as well. Then as one step, and I don't know where we're jumping into, actually, onto the next steps. But I think as one thing that the committee is interested in is scheduling. I'm not going to get the pronunciation of John's last name correctly. Thank you.
Traska?
Traska, thank you. If available on the 29th, which is, that's our next meeting, May 29th? Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't have an interim one. If we could schedule that for our next meeting on the 29th, that gives us more than a month to prepare. Because if I'm John, I want to get some things in advance so I don't just walk in and start getting cross examined. And then let's go ahead and schedule Joe Philpeck for our June 5th meeting. And again, we have a lot of time to prepare for that. Of course, I'm using the Royal Week. Have time to prepare for that. Do we want to just pause there and work with what we have, the free law, like?
I mean, I think that that's, that's a council kind of decision because it involves, kind of, it involves budgets. And so I feel like for Nathan and I to make that kind of a decision is kind of hard since it involves finances.
I mean, I think that's responsible, is the taxpayer dollars. See what we can get from the resources that we have.
I agree. Not that I would want to hear from everybody, but we don't need to prepare an RFP and make the request. And it sounds as though Professor Shokin is available for a long stretch.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we think we need to reach out to any of the folks that Christopher Barry referred us to? Or can we wait and let's speak to our?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think you guys have better line of sight into what the council may or may not be comfortable in, with doing. But anecdotally, what I've understood is, you know, maybe it's cost sensitive in this environment where tariffs could affect your revenue. So we're respectful of that.
Okay. Then we can communicate back, please, to Christopher Barry. Thank you for the referrals, but we will work with what we have for now and follow up if needed. And then we should probably also get back to Professor Shokin, just to say the same things. Thank you for your interest. We appreciate your availability. We have a couple of people we're going to speak to in the short term. We may get back to you. Back to something that you said about preparing something in advance, not just questions, but whether we want to start to synthesize.
There's just so much, it's like 310,000 pages. I mean, there's so much information that it would, I feel like, and I don't know who does this. I think that Nathan and I kind of had a conversation before too, like how that's prepared. But like if there's a way to do a preliminary draft of sort of what we've compiled and what we know.
Summary?
Yeah, sometimes we're summarizing or something because we do know even small things and some of our things are the commission form of government. How that happened, there's some things that we know.
I nominate ChatGPT, GPT.
ChatGPT.
I'm only half kidding. Actually, the proper use with smart prompt engineering of something like Copilot or ChatGPT could summarize
All of this.
300 and some pages pretty easily. I think it's a good idea because I think it will help us and the public sort of synthesize what we already have and get us better prepared to make the most of our conversations with our guests on the 29th of May and the 6th of, I'm sorry, the 5th of June. Why don't we discuss offline the best way to do that? But I think, I think what I'm hearing is there's an interest in having some kind of a summary of particularly of the pros and cons. The main thrust of our obligation, which is to explore what are the benefits of elected versus benefits of appointed and vice versa? Does that make sense?
I have a question. Eric, is the ad hoc, joint ad hoc committee looking for a summary of documents that have already been produced?
Yes.
Okay.
And frankly, I haven't, I mean, well, I've been through 116 pages. There were links to a number of additional articles. I can't say that I've read all the linked articles. And some of those could be helpful as well. But I think between now and we have over a month, I would say, between now and the next few weeks, distilling what I would call the existing universe of information we have specifically on the pros and cons of elected versus pros and cons of appointed. Do we could somehow distill that into a very rough summary so that we could use it for preparing to have a discussion with our speakers on the 29th and on the 5th? Anyone have any different thoughts? Anything sound completely unreasonable with that path? And I'm not kidding about leveraging technology.
We're good for an hour.
Okay. We can certainly talk about logistics offline. So maybe some other thoughts that folks have as we proceed. Any other action items or next steps that we should discuss, moving to item six now, other than the discussion that identified experts?
So are we going to have to just come up here and we're just going to ask some questions, right? I mean, that's, it's going to be just kind of.
That's a very good question. I would not suggest that they go to the podium and get cross examined by committee alone.
I feel it's really awkward.
I'm going to suggest that we have like a table in the back, committee style. And we sit around and, I mean, there's enough people. There's not that many people in this room we can't just sit around a table.
Are we going to give them a preliminary list of questions?
Yes, yes.
I think that's respectful.
Absolutely.
And helps them prepare.
Yeah, I agree.
As I mentioned earlier, I think that doing both the synthesis and then using the synthesis to have a better example of what the questions are. Because I think the synthesis will help us identify the questions. Not that we'd already have some now. But yes, I absolutely think that we should have questions at least a week in advance.
I think an interesting part of this is not only what questions, what we already answered and what our understanding of the current universe is, but also the questions that we, but the known unknowns, the things that we still want to figure out. And so having sort of a list of that, those questions may be helpful as we sort of frame the questions we want to pose to the experts as well.
Agreed.
It may be a different list of questions as they may not be practicing lawyers, for example.
Right.
Yeah. But they may sort of guide us towards, you know, the right questions to be asking.
Agreed. And the other advantage of having the questions in advance is not just to be respectful, which isn't very important, but also they may come back to us and say, you posed 15 questions. We're all, or I'm just going to, this hypothetical person may say, I'm only comfortable speaking 10. And then that would be helpful for us to look at in advance.
Yeah, that we need to ask.
Or even you're asking the wrong question. You asked this, but I'd really like to tell you about that. But I don't want to get derailed or like you leak you off, off track. So, you know, if we had some preliminary back and forth with them, I think that that would make the live discussion even more preferable.
That's, that's what any good consultant will tell you is that I don't want to answer the question you put to me, but I want to answer the question you really need to have the answer to.
Sure.
Thank you for raising that. Good question. And I'm also thinking there'll be more on the logistics. I have a feeling you'll have questions for us and how do you want to go about this? And we can, we can address the logistics offline. Anything else in terms of speakers, information, documents that we want to request for now? You're not foreclosed forever if you don't think of it right now. But if there's something you have that you came in with. I don't have anything else.
So it seems appropriate to do a quick summary just to make sure we're all on the same page. Action steps, next items, et cetera. First, we will schedule Mr. Traska for the May 29th meeting and Mr. Philpeck for the June 5th meeting. And we will respond to Professors Shokin and Barry. And for Professor Shokin, hold for now, but perhaps we'll be speaking with him later. And then next step is to produce a preliminary summary of the documents that have been produced to date and to help identify the questions that will be presented to the presenters in advance of them coming to the meeting.
Yes, with the addition that members of the committee will be thinking about their own questions to add to that list.
Which they will submit.
Correct. And then I'm going to suggest that we, because we don't have a deadline, things don't happen, that we target May 15th to have this accomplished. That gives us some wiggle room if we need a little bit more time. So I'm thinking that it would be, to use Nathan's word, respectful to get the questions to our first speaker by later than 22nd of May. Does that give some opportunity for them to come back and say, you're at?
Circulate the draft report by May 15th.
Yes, and maybe we call it a summary. So I think it's premature to call it a report. It will probably end up being a report, but.
And then that will allow time for the preparation of questions. And then we'll give those questions submitted to the staffs. And then we'll give the summary document and the draft questions to the presenters.
Sound good? All right, no, thank you. All right, well, thank you, as always, for the clear and concise summary. Anything else from the committee before we move to item seven, which is public comment? All right, we're at that magic time of the evening. This is item seven, public comment. Any members of the audience have any questions or comments with respect to the relatively narrow scope of this ad hoc committee? If you have any.
It's weird, yeah.
It's, well, I read it, it's pretty, it's pretty narrow. I don't think this, I don't think anyone in this room needs a reminder that if you have questions or comments on broader issues directed at the village council or the library board trustees, please attend their meetings to raise those. If you have anything you would like to say at this point in time regarding the ad hoc committee, please come to the podium, we'd love to hear from you. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, Martin Slayton, you all know I'm one of the library trustees. I wanted to give a little bit of personal perspective, as one of the newer trustees. I've lived in this town since nineteen seventy nine. Not quite nineteen sixty two. I have never felt as connected to the community as I have in the last couple of years being on the library board. Part of that is the nature of an appointed board, because it's connected not only to people who've been involved in library issues and the library staff and so forth, but also the council through, through thin over the last couple of years. I've been talking to some of my peers at other libraries in the area, most of whom are elected. And it's a very different dynamic. Pros and cons to both, obviously. But a number of those trustees who are elected, they do a great job serving patrons of the library and the community, but they have almost no interaction with any of the rest of the government's structure and the greater community. Maybe a quarterly inter, or annual intergovernmental meeting, or if someone's involved in party politics, they may see someone, you know, at a, a party or event or a festival or something. But even though we've had some conversations at both the village council and the library board lately about some disconnects that have taken place, we do have a different kind of relationship with both the council, the rest of the, the community governance, and the community members. That can create issues, of course, too, as we know. But it's something I wanted to share with you, just based on my anecdotal conversations and my visitation with other library boards. There, there's a lot to be said also for them, you know, being able to function completely independently and just function on one, you know, focus on library stuff and so forth. So I'm, you know, I'm not coming to any conclusion here. But I think it was worth sharing what I had found out in those conversations and a compare and contrast with how engaged that we are all with the rest of Downers Grove. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Good evening, Kylie Spurn, Downers Grove resident. No big fire Brinstone, uh, Brinstone speech tonight, I just actually have some questions. They're not in any particular order, but I read through nearly all of the packet, and I just have some questions. So one of them is, what are the other village facilities that receive free electricity under the commite agreement? And how does their usage compare to that of the library? The reason why I ask is there has been some focus on the library getting all this free stuff, but I want to know who else gets the free stuff? What is the annual membership cost for unincorporated Downers Grove residents who wish to join the Downers Grove library? Will the committee investigate the tax impact on Downers Grove village property owners should the library become an elected library board? And the bottom line is how much will my property taxes go up? If unincorporated Downers Grove is annexed into the territory of a district library, how much will their taxes go up? In the event that a district library option goes to referendum, will there be a separate referendum for residents of unincorporated Downers Grove on whether they want to be annexed or not? If so, would Downers Grove township be responsible for such a referendum as they are the governing body of unincorporated Downers Grove, from what I understand? And then the other question, last question is, in order for an elected library board to happen, the Illinois Local Library Act would need to be amended. Would the Illinois District Library Act also require an amendment and support from our state representatives? And that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good questions, do not know the answers off the top of our heads, but
Yeah, well, that, that's.
We will, we'll look into those, thank you for asking them. Other questions or comments from members of the audience? Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I felt like I had to say something, I was spoken at the other ones.
Unbroken Street.
Yes, yes, so my comment is actually a technical one, and technical in the most literal sense. When you're talking about using artificial intelligence to summarize the, some of the background information that's been gathered already. I like the idea, it's a great idea, you know, I think it's good use of technology. Some things to watch out for, because it's, I, I've got a background in actually implementing AI systems for corporate use, so I've got some level of expertise there. Some of the caveats are well-known, people have heard the term hallucinations, where the software may find patterns that don't, and then generate some false results, because it fits the pattern, but it's not actually in the data you've got. So that's one that everybody knows about. One other thing that is a lesser known type of limitation of this is that it's a pattern recognition process, and so it's going to find patterns in the data that you're providing it, and Trusty Wings made a very good insight today when he was talking about the fact that there are no instances of the hybrid approach. So that type of, of insight is not likely to come from an artificial intelligence software, because that is not in the data. It's done by reflection and understanding of what is in the data. So, you know, that's the type of thing that is both very valuable and not likely to come out. So I would urge everyone to use that as, you know, consider it like a draft written by, you know, like let's say you have a student come in here and do a draft for you, but the real insights you're going to have are probably going to be more valuable, and, you know, you can't, you can't delegate the software, you're going to have to actually do it, do it yourself and check it.
Thank you, appreciate those insights. Other questions or comments from members of the audience? All right, hearing none, well, thank you for being here, we do appreciate your input. Any follow-up comments from any members of the committee? The only thing I will add is I very much appreciate your points about use of AI. And just to be clear, because I think it's worth clarifying, I was talking about using AI just to summarize the document, so the confines would be the universe of, we wouldn't be going out to internet and getting the sources of hallucinations, I fully appreciate what you're talking about. But even then, it's, assume it was prepared by an intern, and everything has to be verified. Maybe a good intern, but it still needs to be verified. Okay, well, if there's nothing further from the committee, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Check her. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Pass the unanimously, we are adjourned, thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.